On the McMinnville Planning Commission for a work session, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I'm going to immediately be handing this over to Heather Richards, our Community Development Director, to introduce the topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners and Counselors. With me is Jeff Hunsaker, our Public Works Director, and Susan Muir, our Parks and Rec Director. We're going to talk a little bit about the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan and from a land use perspective tonight. And then we have a couple of policies that we wanted to visit with you about. Claudia, I have a note to say to unmute. Do you really want me to unmute? Okay. Okay, so we are talking about the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. This is our, it was adopted by the City Council by resolution in June of 2024. You have four exhibits in your staff report and meeting packet tonight, and we want to go through those for you. They're proposed comprehensive plan amendments, and they're proposed to support that June 2024 Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, otherwise known as the PROS Plan. The exhibits you have in your meeting packet is, one is the actual plan and its appendices. Exhibit B is a proposed amendment to what we call Volume One of the Comprehensive Plan. That's our background information. Exhibit C is amending Volume Two of our Comprehensive Plan. That's our goals and policies. And Exhibit D amends Volume Three of the Comprehensive Plan. That's our implementing ordinances, and for this particular discussion, it's our framework plan. We want to go through why there's a need for amendments to the Comprehensive Plan documents to support the PROS Plan, and then, as I said, point out a couple of policy issues for you to discuss. The purpose of the PROS Plan was to update the park's inventory and its existing conditions, document the needs and priorities, identify the community-supported vision and goals, and recommend projects and policies for the next 20 years. The 20-year planning horizon for the PROS Plan was the same as our growth planning horizon that we've been working on, which is 2021 to 2041. It was adopted by resolution by the City Council, Resolution Number 202438, and it was adopted June 25, 2024. The resolution, interestingly, had in it some language that talks about how it replaces and supersedes the previous PROS Plan currently in use for all purposes except land use. The council then directs staff to begin preparing the Comprehensive Plan amendments needed to support the PROS Plan for future council consideration, and nothing in that resolution was or shall be construed as a final decision by the council that concerns the adoption, amendment, or application of statewide planning goals, a comprehensive plan provision, or a land use regulation. We did that on purpose because we use the parks plan as part of our land use program. We use it to identify future location of planned parks based on our adopted community values. We use it to require land and park improvements with land use applications. We forecast future park land need based on the adopted acreage levels of service per capita in the PROS Plan. And we also do use the land use guiding goals and policies that we have in our Comprehensive Plan for locational provisions. This is an example from the 1999 Plan of the parks' future land use map, identifying current park locations and future park locations. We've used that as we've worked with different development projects. You'll notice on this map that there was an interest in a special use park up by the Baker Creek North development, and it was one of the provisions that we used to have that discussion with them to develop that special use park with the meadow there that they are owning and maintaining until 2032 for the city. We also have a McMinnville Comprehensive Plan policy that's in Volume Two, Number 170.05, and it says, "For purposes of projecting future park and open space needs, the standards that's contained in the adopted McMinnville Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan shall be used." Both of you, as decision-making bodies, have gone through that process in terms of what that future park land need forecast is. It's been challenged by both Mark Davis and Friends of Yamhill County. We're going through that process with the state right now as well. But this Comprehensive Plan policy is a clear directive on what we're using for the level of service in terms of acreage for that. In the current 1999 Plan, it has 14 acres per thousand capita identified, and that's what we've used in our growth planning purposes. The PROS Plan that was adopted by the City Council by resolution changes that level of service to 10.3 acres per thousand capita. The PROS Plan also has, oh, we also have this in our existing plan policies, a proximity level of service, where we have identified that every resident should be within a half mile of a community or neighborhood park. This is a map from the current PROS Plan that identifies those service areas with the darker red being a quarter-mile walk and the lighter red being a half-mile walk. So we cannot, in land use, we have to go through a process of adopting something through a state-regulated process to be able to use that document for our land use provisions. So I just described how we use it through land use, and if we haven't gone through a Comprehensive Plan acknowledgement process by state regulations, we can't use the document for those provisions. So that's why we're going through this process of adopting it as a comp plan amendment after it has already been adopted by City Council as a resolution, because we can't use the current PROS Plan update in our land use process until we go through this. It's regulated by state laws. We call it an acknowledged Comprehensive Plan adoption process. The premise behind it is you have public notice, you have opportunity for public testimony, and opportunity for appeals. And then you need to create findings that says it meets state laws and local Comprehensive Plan goals and policies, so just like all of our other legislative initiatives that we've done. So the process you need to follow is you need to notice it to DLCD, Department of Land Conservation and Development, 35 days in advance of your first evidentiary public hearing. We do our public hearings with the Planning Commission. The decision is made by City Council, and then after the decision by City Council, there is a timeframe in which to appeal that decision to the state, and that's sort of that Comprehensive Plan process. And that's what we're talking about tonight. So our Comprehensive Plan itself is divided into three volumes. The first volume is what we call our background information. The background information is the volume that gives us all the data and bases that we use for findings. So when we write findings for you to consider when making decisions, we are looking at the information that's in that Volume One as sort of the factual basis for those findings. It also provides the findings for our Comprehensive Plan goals and policies, which is what you're most familiar with, which is Volume Two. And then Volume Three is actually the zoning ordinance, so the development code that we use, and all the adopted maps that go with that, the implementing ordinances. All three of those volumes need to be amended to support the PROS Plan update. So Volume One, in terms of the background information, our proposal to you is we're going to replace the existing language that is in Volume One. So we have existing embedded language in there, as well as the 1999 Plan. Replace that existing language with the updated plan document itself, and I'll go through some examples of that. And I'll point to some of the chapters that are in the PROS Plan to just sort of share with you where you can find that. This is not all-inclusive. This is just pieces that I'm pulling out to sort of illustrate how that background information is used. So Chapter Two, the PROS Plan update, is called the Park System Snapshot. That's really looking at the, an assessment of the park conditions, and the assessment identified that there's aging play equipment and amenities, there's specialized needs that are not being met, there's parks in our floodplains, and user safety concerns. It also has analysis of the system's operation and maintenance in terms of where we're at with our ability to maintain our existing program in parks, and it shows that we are below the average in terms of both our expenditures per acre and also our employee comparisons. Chapter Three talks about the vision goals and objectives. So this was put together after a very extensive public engagement process, and out of that process, the vision was to be inclusive, interconnected, vibrant, safe, and welcoming. It has seven different goals in the PROS Plan, as well as five objectives that the city is meeting with this planning process. Chapter Four talks about the opportunities. So how do we move forward into that 20-year planning horizon, and where are the opportunities there? One of the discussions in Chapter, excuse me, Chapter Four is the level of service determination. So in the 1999 Plan, and what we've used in our growth planning so far is that 14 acres per thousand capita determination for levels of service of needed future park land. After going through the community engagement process and looking, and the analysis of what our existing system has done and what we've been able to achieve, there was a decision made to move forward with the level of service based on our existing conditions. So right now, our existing conditions is 10.3 acres per thousand capita, and that's been the determining level of service moving forward over the next 20-year planning horizon. So when we amended the background information in Volume One, we can now use this as the factual basis for forecasting future park land need, the 10.3 acres, rather than the Chapter Four, also, this particular parks planning process focused a lot on equity and the need to have a parks plan that serves our community in equitable ways. And Chapter Four walks through how those different decision-making factors came into play. This is just one example of it. It's not all of them, but there's maps in there that looked at population density, average household income, population of color, population under 18. And so that was all sort of factual information that helped determine those future park land needs, and that would also be basis for findings for us as we move forward the planning program, and that would be part of our Volume One information. I'm going to bounce around a little bit, but hopefully it will make sense for you as I do. The appendices are also important. They're very data-informed. So Appendix B talks a lot about the public engagement that took place with this process. There was very extensive public engagement. There was a lot of outreach into communities that we don't normally see and hear in our planning process, so good, informed outreach, and that's all provided as factual data in Appendix B. Goal One of the land use process is citizen involvement, so it's important for us to have that factual basis in our Comprehensive Plan document so we can use that moving forward to show how, to show the finding of how we met that particular goal. Appendix A is looking at the existing park inventory. So this looks at our current park land that we have, both developed and undeveloped, and establishes the baseline for that. And then Appendix C looks at the 20-year capital project and operations costs. But in this particular appendix, you also see where future proposed parks are identified as well, and it has some size provisions in it. So that's a factual basis for us looking forward in terms of need for future parks and what they would look like as a minimum. Some cities elect to include language in their adopting ordinance, allowing this project list to be able to be amended without going through a Comprehensive Plan amendment process in the future. So this is kind of the CIP. These numbers and projects could change and morph a little bit over time as, this is a 20-year planning horizon document, so if the council wants more flexibility in being able to actually make those changes into the CIP, then we would put some language in that adopting ordinance saying this particular appendix is not part of the Comprehensive, would not need to be amended as part of the Comprehensive Plan process if the appendix itself is amended. Appendix C, as I described to you, talks about improvements at existing parks, so the planned future improvements at existing parks, what they are, how they, who, how they're, if, whether they're built, new additions or improvements, how they would be maintained, and then also the estimated cost for them, and it walks through that in detail. And then it also has language in there about the proposed new parks, both in terms of neighborhood parks, also in terms of the planned new community park in the southwest area, and then proposed new greenways, and it has acreages in that to establish minimum standard of sizes. Also, in the plan document itself, it's narrative about those proposed new programmed parks, and then also those proposed new greenways. So we would use this language to help us with the land use applications we're looking at and receiving to identify where future new parks are conceptually planned to go and what their intended purpose is in terms of how they're meant to serve the community moving forward. The narrative in the park talks about, this is an example of the narrative for the Fox Ridge Road Neighborhood Park. So it has narrative that talks about the development of a five-acre minimum park to serve existing park service gaps, as well as future development in this growth area. So that helps us in our discussions with developers about what those minimum standards The location of the parks, I'm going back to that first map that I showed you of the level of service of our existing park system. You'll notice in that that we have some service gaps in our central area of our city, and so if you look at this map, and the tan areas are all our expansion areas there, so we don't have any parks there and obviously have not identified that level of service yet. But if you look at this map compared to the map of future parks in the recreation system, you'll see that the new parks are identified where we had service gaps before, so in the Three Mile Lane area, which is currently in the city but has a service gap there, and then in the central area of our community as well, are two new parks identified. Then the remaining parks are identified in our UGB expansion areas. So what this will mean is because the level of service of acreage for our, for, excuse me, because we are reducing the level of service of acreage per capita in our park system, we need to amend the framework plan. The framework plan was adopted in 2020 as part of the McMinnville Growth Management Urbanization Plan. It was based on the level of service of 14 acres per thousand capita. It has a specific number of acres in there in our, identified in our UGB expansion areas to meet that level of service. With the reduction in the level of service, there's a reduced number of acreage contemplated in the UGB expansion area, so we actually need to go in and amend this plan. This plan is what is going to serve as our sort of direction for our area plans that we're working on, where we're going to take the concepts in the framework plan and dive deeper into them, and this is providing sort of that framework for that deeper dive. So it's important to go through this amendment process. The amendment actually reduces the amount of parkland acreage in the UGB expansion area from 254 acres to 127 acres. So this is our current map that's in the framework plan. This is that Volume Three of our Comprehensive Plan as an implementing ordinance, and what we're going to need to do is remove a couple of parks that have been identified in that framework plan. We'll remove the neighborhood park in the Booth Bend area. We'll remove the community park in the Fox Ridge Road area, and we'll remove a neighborhood park in the southwest area. We also have in the framework plan the specifics about the acreage for each of the different elements for that future forecast of land need, and you'll see that the amendments recommended for parks is to reduce it by 50% from 254 acres to 127 acres. We also have identified where this acreage should sit in the different areas of the framework plan, and so that we will be going in and deleting some of the parks that are identified in that framework plan. Then you'll note that where there's the, sort of the most comprehensive reduction of acreage is in the neighborhood parks and the community parks in the UGB expansion areas. So this table lays out the total acreage that was, that was adopted per the MGMUP in terms of the framework plan, and then how that's changed with the PROS Plan and amending this framework plan to support that. So there's a 50%, reduction in the total acreage of parkland in the UGB expansion areas. There's a 66% reduction of acreage associated with community parks, and these are minimum numbers, so the 20 acres comes from Appendix C of the PROS Plan. It's meant to be a minimum standard, and then neighborhood parks is reduced by 89%. The greenways and natural areas are only reduced by 18%. So although you see a significant reduction in the community and neighborhood parks, you see a lot less reduction in the greenways and natural areas in those UGB expansion One of the things to think about is what does that mean across the board in terms of how those UGB expansion areas relate to the city, the existing city limits, and we put some calculations together for you. This is based on our most recent housing needs analysis and where we expect new homes and population to go within the city. So the UGB expansion area is meant to hold about 9,200 people, which would be about 24% of the population. And the amount of park acreage that will be in that UGB expansion area to serve those people, so if you think about the level of service of acreage per capita, is actually 32% of the overall acreage, so more acreage actually in the UGB expansion area per capita than within, than within the city limits. Where there's a significant reduction is in the community neighborhood parks acreage, so that only 16% of the acreage that's put into community and neighborhood parks will actually be in these UGB expansion areas, but more than 50% of the greenway and natural area acreage will be in the expansion area. So it'll be a different park system sort of serving that UGB expansion area than in the rest of the city limits. We tried to look at that, what does that mean in terms of equity across the city, and what it looks like is 20%, you'll have 20% more greenway acreage in the UGB expansion area and about 8% to 10% less acreage of community and neighborhood parks per capita. So Volume Two is the goals and policies piece of the Comprehensive Plan. This is probably the part of the plan that you're most familiar with. We have proposed amendments to the existing goals and policies to support the updated plan, and it's really based on the fact that McMinnville's PROS Plan is rooted in equity, and it's intended to reflect the current and projected needs of the community. So if you look at the proposed amendments, most of the existing policies remain the same. They've been tweaked a little bit to bring in some additional value systems of safety and maintenance and equity in that regard. And then there's several new policies that are identified to be brought into this part of the Comprehensive Plan, and those reinforce that lens of equity in terms of how this, how this park's programming serves the community moving forward. So if you look at those policies, it talks a lot about equity in terms of serving underrepresented populations and neighborhoods. It looks at equity in terms of maintenance standards in our park system as well. It brings in a couple more lenses into the process itself. So next steps for this, we have already noticed the DLCD, Department of Land Conservation and Development, that we're intending to have a first public hearing on November 7 with the Planning Commission for these proposed Comprehensive Plan amendments. If the Planning Commission needs a second public hearing, we'll schedule that for December 5. We'll then bring it to City Council at your January 14 meeting for consideration, and we hope that the ordinance goes into effect on February 14. The reason for this timeframe is, as you know, we're also in the process of doing our land use efficiencies work with our sequential UGB work plan, and that change in level of service and how it impacts the UGB expansion areas, so there's, we just remove, when we adopt this, we'll remove 127 acres in those UGB expansion areas identified for parks. That means that 127 acres can be used for something else, which would be really important because we still show need in housing acreage, so we can start looking at those land use efficiencies through that work. We do need this adopted to be able to do that, so that's why we're in this cycle of timing for it. So with that, if there's any questions for me or any questions for Susan in terms of the PROS Plan itself, how it's structured, how we need to bring it into the comp plan, happy to answer those, or we'll hand it over to David, who will walk you through some of the policy questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time, either in the room or on Zoom, Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to remember what the exact wording on the slide was, but there was a slide that referenced some cities choose not, or choose to use language that allows them to make changes without, you didn't make clear at that time which way did we go with our verbiage and what necessarily the pros and cons of either direction might be.
Okay, I'll, I'll answer the first part, maybe Susan can answer the second part, if that makes sense. So what we've submitted to the state in terms of our DLCD notice was we submitted the whole plan for adoption into the Comprehensive Plan. It seemed easier to do that, and so all the appendices in the plan has been submitted to the state. We can, we can in our notice amend it and say we're going to remove these sections of the PROS Plan from the comp plan discussion and identify page numbers, or you can in the adopting ordinance say that these sections, they're still part of the Comprehensive Plan, they've been adopted initially, but they can move forward with amendments and not go through a Comprehensive Plan process. The reason for that would be having the, this section in the Comprehensive Plan helps us in terms of those new parks discussions with land use applications because it identifies the size of them. But the, the project list also determines sort of the CIP and other things, and it has operation costs in it. And so the, over a 20-year planning horizon, there will probably be opportunities where the city will want to change that, and rather than going through that process I just described of noticing DLCD and having public hearings of Planning Commission and adopting by ordinance by City Council, you can make those changes at City Council by resolution.
So did we choose to go, is that what you're saying?
What's that?
Did we choose to allow us to have that flexibility? Is that, am I?
That's, that I would say is a discussion for you tonight. We just, all we've done thus far is just notice the DLCD, the full enchilada.
I think Heather did a great job of covering most of it. I would say there's some things in the PROS Plan that do need to be updated more regularly. Heather mentioned the capital improvement plan. There's also programming language in there, like what we offer at the community center and what we offer at our buildings and facilities, language that is not a land use, would not be typically thought of as a land use issue, standards for how many, what the cost is per acre of certain types of maintenance, of certain types of different open spaces. So it's kind of a hybrid. It's a real system plan, and there are pieces of it that would be able to be amended easier than going through a land use plan amendment.
Any additional questions? Counselor Peralta?
Yeah. Thank you for that explanation about the option of giving more flexibility and updating the plan without updating the Comprehensive Plan. Are there any downsides to adding that flexibility into the code?
I mean, I think there's a range of different ways that cities do it. Some don't put anything in there and just simply refer to it. Some do sort of like we're doing, and others, it's all integrated in. I think this is a, because our PROS Plan is so comprehensive to deal with so much more than just land use, this makes a lot of sense for us to have a flexibility and also keep the budget in check. You know, we've been talking about a lot of challenges we've had with operations and maintenance. This allows us to keep the plans better aligned. We can look at this CIP as we do the budget. We can look at the operations as we do the ad packages through the budget process, so it really helps that way as well.
Thank you.
I guess I would just add to that. So anything that's not in the comp plan, we can't use in a land use process. So if there's, if we get it, let's pretend it's Baker Creek North is coming through again, it's a planned development, and we have interest in, let's, okay, let's, let's choose another, Reed's Crossing, which is, I think we could all agree is a great development in Hillsboro. Let's pretend that's coming through the city. We have, we have identified a need for a park, a public park in that, in that area where that development's occurring. With the land use application, we can exact the land for the park. We can work with the developer to have them actually build the park. There's all sorts of things, tools that we can use the land use program to help support the development of the park and the land costs for the park, for the city, take those off the city. If we don't have it in the comp plan, we can't use those tools for it. So it's kind of finding, it's threading the needle as to the things that we're going to want to use in the future for findings for our land use applications versus what we want flexibility with, that we can just make decisions by resolution at City Council.
Got it. So you, you need enough concrete in there to kind of inform future decision-making, but you also want a little flexibility, and I assume you have a solid recommendation on that, right?
That's the language that Heather proposed in the staff report. That's the language that reflects that.
Thank you. So when we agreed, can I continue, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So when we agreed four months ago to So when we agreed four months ago to reduce the amount of parkland, I don't think at that time we talked about specific parcels to be reduced, but you mentioned a couple today. Is that, am I right that we hadn't really talked about that previously?
No, the PROS Plan includes some added parkland that wasn't previously identified and some reductions. I think this is the first time they, that you've seen the specifics.
I'm glad that it's the first time because you raised two big red flags. And I don't think Baker Creek North was the wrong thing to reference, which is the Booth Bend Road Park area and the Fox Ridge Park area. And if I'm thinking that those are the, I mean, if those are the same places that I'm thinking, those are two of the last hardwood groves that we have in the city. And, and so if our plan is not to protect that, I kind of have a problem with that.
And I think I'd reflect back to the minimum language that we have in there, um, in the future urbanizable areas. It's really looked at as a minimum and that allows us to apply that equity lens again as we go through that.
Right. But that was mentioned for housing in this conversation. That's, that's troubling to me. So, I mean, it, not that we don't need housing, but I also think we have these other values to consider, so.
So another way to, yes, the reduction of acreage in the, in the UGB expansion area is a concern for the planning team. We've talked about that. But look, looking at the, uh, how it's reduced, it's reduced mostly in neighborhood parks and then there's, there's more greenway space contemplated in those areas. So that's the natural resource protection, the repairing corridors and stuff like that. Another way to protect the tree groves, which I think is what you're talking about, is we do have the natural resources planning where we identified, and I can go back and see if it's on that inventory. We have an inventory of, of high-value tree groves that we want to protect through our planning process as well. That's separate from the parks plan. It would keep it in private ownership. They just wouldn't be able to, you know, eliminate the groves themselves or impact them. And we would transfer the, the, uh, development value of protecting those groves to their property so they can do more on the rest of the property. That's the other tool. And to, to further describe it, um, when, and I can't remember with the Fox Ridge Road area plan. So we removed a community park. We're removing a community park, a contemplated community park in the Fox Ridge Road area with the PROS Plan update, with the reduction in level of service. Would that community park have protected that tree grove? That's the discussion that Susan's talking about is it's, the, the park itself is serving a broader purpose of equity in many different ways. So it may or may not have protected that tree grove. Um, and so that's why maybe that natural resources planning where we've said, this is important to the city to protect, we're going to protect it in this way specifically. And I'll say we haven't adopted that, right? So they're not protected today.
And again, my recollection of the Fox Ridge discussion was very much that, you know, these were going to be protected and not just by the inventory that you're describing that we haven't adopted yet, but also by the fact that we were talking about putting trails and parkland in those spaces. And so the, you know, those choices, those two particular choices raise a significant concern to me.
Yeah.
And in particular, I mean, the Fox Ridge one is, I think, really important because it's potentially an iconic vista in the city. But then Booth Bend is, is significant because it's a flat, buildable spot that probably would, in, in an area where there's infrastructure, if it's the same place that I'm thinking about, that, that would literally wipe out a bunch more old, like one of the last two big ones that we have. So anyway, those are my concerns, um, on that. The other question I had is, uh, and this may really not relate to this, but I mean, part of the reason why I voted to reduce the amount of parkland going forward is that we don't have, we haven't had the resources to, to staff and maintain the parkland that we have. So significantly expanding that when we already are at a deficit of staffing to deal with that struck me as, you know, I'd love to have more parkland, but we need to be able to sustain, we need to make sure we have the resources to staff it. So my question is, how does the maintenance of the green, like, I guess this would be for Jeff, how does the maintenance of the greenways compared to the maintenance of parkland in terms of carrying costs? Is it significantly less? Is it comparable?
Yeah, I can find the reference page of, we actually broke it down into multiple types of maintenance classifications for undeveloped land, for natural areas and others. And we have them calculated by acre. So we'll be able to keep that up. Uh, and you mentioned a really important piece. That's one of the equity tools that Heather mentioned is not only is it proximity and amount of parkland, but through that equity lens and the PROS Plan update, we realized that quality and safety of parks, and that's the component that you're talking about, through operations and capital replacements, we were not keeping up with. Um, and so you can see in our older parks, just a really degradation of our facilities and our playgrounds and our surfaces and other things. So it was a, it's a balance. Um, and we wanted to make sure that we can maintain and keep that equitable look for quality, safe parks across the community. I'll look up that table of different maintenance costs.
Thank you. Other questions?
Anyone online have any questions?
Counselor Gary?
Uh, yeah, just on, on the similar line, uh, for this section, for my questions was around those decisions around, um, oh, get to the screen. Uh, the, 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 the removal of the neighborhood park at Booth Bend Road and the community park at Fox Ridge Road, um, were those, so it's both, the, the driver there was to get numbers down to match that level of service, to match the sort of total acreage to the, the new 10 acreage per thousand. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, that was the, the Booth Bend Road?
Uh, both the Booth Bend Road, neighborhood park and the Fox Ridge Road, community park, the decisions for those two to remove were to drive the, the total, you know, so looking at the, the parks per thousand, converting that to the total park acreage, getting that number down in a, in a, tying that to actual parks. Those were the two that we, two statements we made to delete the neighborhood park and delete the community park, um, from, from Booth Bend Road and Fox Ridge Road respectively. That's how we're getting that bulk acreage lowering. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So looking, looking at the map and knowing the, the goal of walkability, um, I think Fox Ridge Road, um, um, less worried about the hit on the community park, but the neighborhood park loss at Booth Bend Road area, can you just talk for a minute about how we should be looking at that, uh, uh, you know, census block underserved, critically underserved area, removing a park from that, that I know Taylor Park and, uh, the other park over there, Heather Hollow, Bend of the Will?
Oh, yeah.
Um, are, are over there and help, but can you tell us about how you envision that area developing with removing that? Aside from the acreage, um, removing the, the, the actual name of the neighborhood park from there?
Yeah. And, and one of the things that we also have talked about is the importance of partnerships for a lot of these things, including starting, continuing the conversations with land trusts, which I know Heather's staff has started that conversation. And you'll notice in the comp plan language that Heather put forward, it talks about uh, public and private parks. So there's still those opportunities in these areas and it gives us an opportunity to say, okay, what's the most meaningful for our community? And if you'll remember, we, we even put some infill parks in our community. We had some concerns over those area plans and the amount of, um, parkland that we would be committing to as part of that when the planning process was going on. And we kind of had these, these processes meeting, um, partway through. And, you know, all of these plans are going to constantly need to be updated and we should keep looking at them and, um, you know, not adopt them in one year and then let 30 years go by before we adopt another one. But that, that is the concept of overall balancing those needs. Related to the particular maps, those were based on the DEIAC meetings that we had and then the community prioritization. And I think we had over 3,000 people help us with prioritizing those parks.
Okay. Very good.
Any additional questions at this time? Not seeing any. Well, oh, Counselor Peralta?
Sorry. Um, at the start of the evening, you mentioned a lawsuit related to the, to parks and, and planning. Can you just jog my memory about?
Appeal.
Sorry. Yeah, I, I just kind of missed it. I, can you, can you?
There's a FEMA lawsuit. Um, yes. So if you recall, and Mark Davis has been pretty consistent about this style. Is he here tonight?
Yes.
He could probably say this better than I, but I've read enough of the letters that maybe I'll represent it correctly. He's been pretty consistent about this dialogue, which is that, uh, one, our level of service was too high because we weren't achieving it. I think that represents one of your narratives. Um, and our, our growth planning, because we have that comprehensive plan policy that says you need to use what's in the adopted parks plan as your level of service. And we have in our, our 1999 plan, which is our most recent plan, adopted, uh, 14 acres per thousand capita. That's what we use for projecting future parkland need. Um, and, uh, Mark's argument has been that's too large because we're not achieving that. And so it shouldn't be that high. Uh, and I, I think if I'm getting that correct. Um, and then the other thing to think about, you know, when we were doing the numbers, um, as planning staff, so we, we're the data geeks, right? So we were like, oh, it's a 50% reduction of what was previously contemplated, planned and adopted four years ago, um, in the UGB expansion areas. That's concerning. But it's also, what happened was those four acres per thousand capita that wasn't achieved within the city limits was now transferring over into that UGB expansion area, if that makes sense. So it escalated a little bit more and Mark has pointed that out in his comments as well at different times along the way. Currently, we, um, submitted our growth, um, needs analysis per the state mandate to do so by the end of last 2023. And in that is a parkland need forecast and it has that old level of service in it. And so that's currently being appealed to the LCDC. That appeal hearing is on Friday. Um, and Mark Davis and the friends of Yam Hill County have both submitted separate appeals, uh, based on our parkland projections. That's why I was referencing.
So, so, but our new plan reduces the level of service for parks, or at least in terms of acreage, right? So does that, does that affect the litigation at all or?
No, because the litigation's based on what's been adopted and, and forwarded. So we, we can't go backwards and replay the game, so to speak, after the gate, last minutes of the game have transpired. So the game was played with the goalpost that we had in play at that time, which was that level of service of 14 acres per thousand. Now, what's interesting to me, and we talked about this going through the public hearing process of, of the growth needs analysis, is that we're in this sequential program, right? And that's new for Oregon. I think we're the third city to enter it. And so usually you identify your need and you respond to the need in the same product that you send up the chain, right? So we need this much acreage, we're going to do UGB amendment for that much acreage. And we've done the land use efficiencies work already. You identify need, you say, how can I serve that need within our existing UGB? And then if I have more need, I go outside the UGB and expand it. We've only done the need analysis. We only, so we've only come up with, this is our need. We haven't done the land use efficiencies work yet and we, and if that, if needed, a UGB amendment. So what's interesting is working with the state is if we adopt this PROS Plan update through this comprehensive plan process, that's why we have the calendar set up the way we do, we can now use that reduced level of service for our land use efficiencies work. That's how those two work together.
Got it.
It doesn't work for the existing appeal process because that's based on the booked work, so to speak.
So, so there's no, like, changing the, the policy doesn't moot the previous lawsuit at all? It just, that just carried?
Appeal. We like to call it an appeal.
Appeal.
But yes, no. I mean, they can choose to remove that at the hearing if they want to do so. There's several items on appeal, but, um, but the appeal is based on the work that's done.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Mayor?
I just wanted to clarify if I could. I found the planning level maintenance cost assumptions. It's in the appendices on page C11 and it has four levels of maintenance, enhanced, standard, basic and undeveloped. And then talks about the cost per acre and what that would look like in the, in our parks. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the page number?
Uh, it is in the appendices, page C11.
Thank you.
About three quarters of the way through.
Any other questions? If not, we, yes, please, Commissioner.
Thank you. I just have a, a maybe a clarification. And the, the PROS Plan, it talks about, it references the, uh, NRPA metrics as guidelines and then a list furthermore, like say, ten, as an example, tennis courts. We would need seven tennis courts for the metrics. How will the Parks Department regulate that aspect of what we're providing to the citizens?
Um, it wouldn't necessarily be a regulatory, um, look at things. It would be as we develop our parks or even redevelop our parks, we would consider, okay, we need, um, you know, four more tennis courts. Is this a park where we want to put one in there? Do we want to go back in and add courts in a place that they are? So we would just track and update that, um, inventory as we move forward in developing or redeveloping our parks.
Counsel, uh, are you, do you have follow-up?
I think my, my comment when we get to the planning commission meeting is language in the, the draft ordinance that would allow that to happen, but we can take that with planning commission. Because my concern is if that's written in as guidelines and then future, future staff 20 years from now or 15 years from now will say, we need to put in 10 tennis courts instead of something that the city really needs.
I think I understand what you're saying. The NR, the reference to the NRPA standards, you're worried that that's, would be what we look at instead of the proposed asset plan in the CIP.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And just, just for the record, so chapter four, which is labeled opportunities, is not the specific guidelines. It's the policies that are in the volume two piece of it. Um, I think that that's in there as sort of additional analysis and data.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? Counselor Chenoweth, did you have?
I was just going to say, I think we should be focusing on pickleball courts, not tennis courts.
Understood. I guess you don't get those complaint emails. Uh, Mr. Leitner?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry that I don't have a PowerPoint for you. You'll just listen to me speak and I apologize at the outset. The development of large-scale planning documents in a municipal context obviously means making certain policy choices at a thousand-foot level. Almost unavoidably, that can lead to uncertainty at particular application points, particularly with the policy decision, when the policy decisions are made in different times, with different lenses, in different documents, with different goals. In the process of preparing comprehensive plan amendments with respect to the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, at least two of those application points have become apparent to staff. Wanted to take this opportunity to clarify the competing policy considerations, note the relationship to the current state of the documents presented and gather any feedback as staff moves forward in this process. A preliminary consideration informing these points and one which you heard some of the details of already, is whether the PROS Plan must be adopted into the comp plan at all. The city, the council, only needs to adopt the PROS Plan into the comp plan if they want to use it in the land use process, which as you saw, is number one, to identify future parkland needs in growth planning. Number two, to exact and, and from, sorry, can't even read my typing, to exact land from development applications for parks. Or three, to set 20-year clear and objective growth planning standards, for example, proximity, access, et cetera. If the city of McMinnville does not want any of that as part of the land use process, they do not need to adopt the PROS Plan as part of the comp plan. Rather, we would just remove current references to the 1999 PROS Plan. While important to understand, as we move forward, this policy decision has already been made. It has been determined that acquiring parkland property through land use applications is beneficial to the city and should remain its operational standard until and unless we move to a willing seller-only situation at some point in the future. With the city intending to use the PROS Plan in the land use process as stated, the subsequent question and major policy consideration is exactly how much of the PROS Plan must be adopted. Goal eight of the statewide land use planning goals addresses recreational needs and the goal in implementing regulations do not require much of local agencies in planning for local parks. However- planning for local parks. However, upon voluntary adoption of a local park plan as part of a local comprehensive plan, appropriate maps and mapping categories are required. The city has adopted some portions of the 99 PROS plan into the comp plan. See specifically Comp Plan Policies 159.00 and 170.05. And the 1999 PROS plan also served as a foundational resource for the MGMUP framework plan. The updated PROS plan is intended to be a comprehensive look at the city's PROS needs and a strategic effort to address those needs as we move forward. Accordingly, it updates and changes the foundational information from the 99 PROS plan and therefore affects some of the foundational assumptions in the comp plan. For the most part, that led to straightforward clarifications as seen in your packet, particularly in Exhibit C, Amendment to Goal Seven of Volume Two of the comp plan. However, one fundamental change that I would like to draw your attention to is the proposed change in service level calculation. The 1999 PROS plan indicated a level of service of approximately 14 acres of parkland per thousand people, as well as locational levels of service in terms of proximity to neighborhood and community parks. The updated PROS plan indicates a minimum ratio of 10.3 acres of parkland per thousand people. The tensions highlighted by this reduction all center around the idea of equity and how it will be applied to actual communities and neighborhoods within the city. And at its most basic, this boils down to a question of how much land the city will procure through exactions when annexations and development occur in UGB areas. On one hand, this may represent a significant potential reduction in the amount of parks serving future neighborhoods in the UGB area, and therefore doesn't guarantee the same proximity to a park for residents within such areas. In fact, if the parkland identified in map 5.1 as falling within the UGB area is added up, it amounts to significantly less parkland proportionally within UGB spaces while meeting the aggregate of 10.3 acres per thousand only across the full city. Statistically expressed, that's a 74% reduction from what is contemplated in the MGMUP and is 8 to 10% less than the rest of the city limits per capita when looking at the UGB area separately. Particularly with goals for increased workforce housing in such developments, this could look like lessened parklands, parkland service in some lower-income areas. Conversely, the PROS plan calls out the 10.3 area acres as a minimum, particularly noting that this approximates the existing service level for parkland and projects it into the community's future, recognizing that historically the city has not achieved the 14-acre-per-thousand standard. Basing this projection in staffing and maintenance capacities and costs indicates the proportional amount of parkland that the city has the capacity to maintain at an acceptable service level. Through community feedback in updating the PROS plan, it is clear that aging, underserved, and under-maintained parks do an equal disservice to the community and its lower-income residents than a lack of parkland altogether. This also relates directly to an effort at responsibly managing the city's budget challenges. Additionally, while not currently mapped out at a parcel level for future certainty, the PROS plan explicitly prioritizes underserved areas of established neighborhoods with the greatest need. The second application point is most specifically with regard to Policy Number 170.18, which is proposed to read, notwithstanding the identification of land in the PROS plan as appropriate for acquisition by the city as publicly owned parkland, the Parks and Recreation Director has the authority to not acquire such land if the acquisition of such land will not meet the needs and interests of the city based on the analysis of the standards and analysis of the PROS plan. The goal here being the same as before, that operational and budget considerations need to be considered when acquiring parkland. The convening tension here is twofold. Number one, the concern that this indicates a less-than-clear and objective standard. And number two, that this concentrates inappropriate authority with city staff. To the first point, the language of this policy was carefully chosen with this tension in mind. The language is intended to represent a sort of relief valve rather than a positive standard whereby parkland, once identified through clear and objective standards as elsewhere laid forth, then can be reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Director based on other city policies and concerns outside of the land use arena. Again, particularly concerns like budget, maintenance capacity, and the situation of the PROS plan and its implementation as a whole. This particular concern and policy was reviewed by both myself and outside legal counsel and determined to be a legal expression of both the need and application of clear and objective standards and the reality that competing city policies may prevent those goals from being carried out in every instance. To flesh out the second point, with no aspersions on the character or professionalism of any city staff, the concerns here being twofold. First, with a provision like this, that it invites potential lobbying of such a decision-maker by individual developers looking for a favored outcome. Here, for instance, a developer who has master planning property where a future park has been identified in the PROS plan would directly benefit from the city's decision to require or acquire a lesser amount of parkland within that space. The second concern being that this decision not being a planning-specific decision, it would not take place with benefit of decision-making in a public venue with appropriate due process. As written and currently proposed, the answer to both concerns lies in the director's appropriate application of legitimate city concerns. A further approach would be to place this authority with a public body with authority over the budgetary commitments of acquisition and operational resources, for example, the city council or the eventual Parks Commission to be established as indicated in the PROS plan. Understanding those competing tensions, are there any questions or comments with regard to staff's current recommendations before you?
Go ahead and open this up for counselors and commissioners. Who would like to start this evening?
Can you repeat that?
[laughing]
I've got a quick question that might have been better previously. I know that we're working on the floodplain issue. And I noticed that we did have an amendment in that is read to, to work with flood areas. But my question is, if we get rid of the Joe Dancer area because it, because it impacts the new flood policies by the state or the federal issues, do we have enough land then to add back the baseball fields, the soccer fields, the other fields that have now gone away and are now not in surplus?
So my, my understanding, and it's a moving target currently, is that all the existing facilities remain as is and can be maintained.
Okay.
They just, the footprint can't get bigger.
Okay.
Without doing, I mean, it could get bigger, bigger if we did a habitat assessment. We can make that choice to make it bigger and go through the process of a habitat assessment review. But without the habitat assessment review, it wouldn't be, the footprint wouldn't be able to get bigger in, in terms of intensity or geographical size.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Counselor Gary? Not at this time?
Not at the moment. Thank you.
I'll, I'll be glad to go while Zach figures out his.
Counselor.
So I heard you write, Counselor, basically, one of the policy decisions we have to make now is whether or not to remove the ability of staff to reduce the existing parkland footprint in negotiations with developers and hand that over to a public body, basically.
As proposed right now, the, the statement is that that would be to rest with the Director of Parks and Recreation. If this were a significant enough concern as discussed, we could look toward changing that to a public body.
Okay. I mean, I'm open to conversation about that. I, I have had concerns in the past with previous applications that we have not added trails and such for lack of money to maintain them. And once we lose that, it's lost. And I think, I do think it probably deserves some public scrutiny beyond just a negotiation between the director and, and a developer.
Yeah, I, on that, I just think I'm hung up on the, the specificity of the, the Park and Rec Director has the authority to not acquire. I think I'm, I think I'm just having a hard time walking myself through the "not" in that sentence. So, can you, can you help me?
Sure. I would be happy to. The idea here, as discussed with our outside legal counsel, is that the, sorry, the policies of land use need to apply first. Be clear and objective, be specific. However, this, this sort of relief valve then allows the Parks and Recreation Director, as currently proposed, to say, there are other operational concerns, there are other city policies that need to inform this decision, and therefore we cannot take on more parkland at this time. Provides a relief valve to the, the formulaic approach of the first half of that process.
So, relief valve, meaning the primary path is as it is now. Developer comes in, neither proposes it, and then it's a, it's an initial negotiation with staff weighing all of our comp plans as adopted. And then, then that goes to, as a recommendation, to the Planning Commission and then council. That's the primary path. The relief valve you're talking about is the, the Parks and Rec, according to how is it written, as that's marching forward, the Parks and Rec Director has the authority to say, this, this is, this is too much. This would overburden our, you know, as the Parks and Rec Director would sit at the great intersection of knowing the, the equity of the plan, the Parks Maintenance Division needs and abilities and how they're delivering that, that service, the, the balancing needs if we're working on these other projects over here, and so we should take less over here. They can, they can relieve some of the pressure of the, the larger load of that park and make that decision to lower that need. So, so Sal's question sort of of some fear that we lose the opportunity to get a, a large offering if it comes up through negotiation is, is met because that's marching along in its normal process where we can hammer that out. The Parks and Rec Director has the ability to lower that if need be to, to manage our, match our parks' needs.
If I may, I, I think it reads, so currently the process would be, you have an adopted Parks Recreation Open Space Plan that has minimum standards in it of, of, of level of service, proximity, and access, right? And so when a project comes in for development, we're looking at that minimum standard and saying, it's been identified by this community adopted plan that we need a five-acre park in this area. And that's what we work on with the developer. If they want to do more than that, we usually are engaging across the board in having the discussion of, does that make sense to do more in a public venue? Should that be a private, you know, park program, whatever that is. My understanding is that this policy as written is that the Park and Rec Director can decide that the, the level of service of the five-acre park could be less than, than the five acres or even not a neighborhood park, or a park at all in that area.
And can I just take the, the extreme awkwardness of this conversation into a little different twist? I think, looking at the purpose of this, and we did look at other cities, some charters say that it has to be the finance director that makes the decision about all property acquisitions. Some cities have very prescribed methods which, with property gets acquired. This was an attempt to start the conversation of, we need to look at it in a holistic system, systematic way. As David mentioned, it's a great time to get, if, if it's the council's wishes to have that happen at an advisory board, we can include that in the resolution when we create the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. The, the opportunity that we see is the ability to look at operations along with acquisition, along with equity, in a citywide look for each application. Who does that? If it's, if it's a decision-making body or an individual staff? That's, that's something that I think we're amenable to any of those. I just wanted to get the awkwardness of that individual title out of the room. It's, it's a way for us to look at it more holistically.
Okay. I'm still tagging on Sal's first question, so I'm going to provide my feedback, and then I'm going to do, I don't get to give the floor to anybody. The, I, I think, I'm comfortable with it has written. I think the, the vesting of, of that decision-making authority in, in staff is helpful. And I think the Parks and Rec Director best represents the individual on staff that could represent that. I, I have been a part of Planning Commission and Council long enough to know that a group of people negotiating a parcel is, is it, is a fairly inefficient. And I have, I have belief that the PROS plan, if followed, will lead to a, a excellent outcome if we follow the plan. So I feel comfortable with this as written.
Thank you. Additional comments at this time or questions?
I'm also going to pop on Sal's and Zach's comment. My concern is that we've already had to reduce our parks' land on appeal, not a lawsuit. And I, I'm concerned that if we don't have the maintenance now, or projected for five, we may have it in 10 or 15 years, and then we've lost the land. And is there a way we can landbank it and not necessarily have the maintenance and just sit on it? So in the, in the possibility that we have it, would that be better served by another addendum or another point or an advisory board? I'm just, I'm very concerned because we keep having to reduce land with the appeals when we may need it in the future.
Yeah, that, that's one of the, the challenges that we have. There are ways, and Heather's done it through some land use applications, to defer, require the developer to maintain it for a certain number of years. So I think on a case-by-case basis, we would look at all of those as a Parks and Recreation Director, and I hope into eternity for your Parks and Recreation Director. Their goal is to expand opportunities for outdoor recreation and preservation of natural areas. So I think that would be the goal, and that's clearly illustrated in the plan, is that's our goal, to build a system that's based in equity and sustainable and all of that. And so I think we would be working, as all of our planning documents do, towards those goals. But the rubber does meet the road somewhere. And so the question is, how far out? You know, for example, right now, I think the city council is one year into a three-year build back with park maintenance, and it took us two years to do that. And so we're hoping we would get into a point where that would not be the problem, but the rubber meets the road in that regard.
Yeah. And then to follow up on that, though, usually there's checks and balances. So if, if the rubber meets the road with you, what happens if somebody says, no, I think we really do need this? Is there a way to appeal that? Is that written into this? That's my concern.
That's my concern. No.
Okay.
That would not be written into it. And there are, we can landbank definitely with land use decisions. We don't have to develop the, the park itself. We can, we take exaction of land with land division applications. So that would be a minor partition. That's a subdivision. That's a planned development. We can write conditions of approval in there saying that we want this, that we will record on this property the needs for, so for instance, we did lose a trail connection for the Cozine Creek Trail in the eight years that I've been here because we chose not to take it as part of a minor partition. And there could have been the opportunity to write in there that when the city is in a place that they want to move this forward, this will be dedicated to the city, something of that nature. So there, there are tools we can put into play for the land banking piece of it. But once it comes, when it comes to the decision-making body, the land use, the land use decision-making body, be it Planning Commission or the city council, based on the type of application that we're dealing with, I'm not sure how, I've never, I've never encountered a system like this where a discretionary decision was made by staff. It's, so I don't know how that would be brought forward into a staff report recommendation land use process in that regard. That that decision had been, that that decision had been made, and it's not moving forward to the decision-making body.
Okay, we have a little bit of a list going here, I believe. Commissioner, counselor, and then commissioner. Did you, you pulled your mic in? Yeah. So, and I'm just going to ask a question before we go into that, that series of questions. to ask a question before we go into that, that series of questions. One is, what do we forecast, and Director Muir, I think this question would be for you, what do we, what do we forecast as being the thing that will trigger, trigger the creation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and would layering it in here, in, in these amendments, reinforce or help us move from planning to implementation in that aspect of the pros plan? That's my question. And then I do just also want to pull that lens out with you that you mentioned, you said awkward conversation, and I just want to underline that we, of course, are not talking about you as the individual Parks and Recreation Director, that we are talking about the, the greater, the greater system here and, and how we want that system to function. So, please, on the, on the question side.
Yeah. And, I'm sorry, repeat the first question?
The, the question is about the pros plan recommendation.
Oh, yes.
For the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and part of this conversation we're talking about now in policymaking is who would that decision-making body be? The pros plan calls for a decision, or a, an advisory committee in this capacity. So, would layering that into this at this time help trigger the formation of that in, in order to give us basically more footing on which to start the implementation process of the pros plan?
Thank you, Mayor. No, the fact that it's in the pros plan is, is the document that the Parks and Recreation Department will consider in implementing those things. So, that would be implemented through the Parks and Recreation Department. The timing for that is connected to actually the potential for a public bond. You know, we had an advisory committee named MAC PAC that helped us with our indoor recreation facilities. That sunsetted. That group is now acting as an informal advisory committee and community informational group, not at the request of the city and not, not on behalf of the city, prepared and really to go if, if the council decides to put a bond on the list. My thinking in that timeline is the recruitment of that, of a Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee while that group is also working would be challenging for us to try and recruit from that. And so, my goal would be right when the bond passes. As a matter of fact, we'll probably have the ordinance, I have several drafts of an ordinance for a Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, that that would be propped up after a bond is passed and put in place to do those types of decisions.
Thank you. Again, we'll go commissioner, then counselor, then commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Director Muir or Attorney Littenberg, this may be for you. In the 1999 plan, we required 14 acres per 1,000 people. Today, that's been changed to 10.4 acres per 1,000 people for parkland. We've not achieved that service level. What service level have we achieved, for those that don't want to read 229 pages?
It is the 10.3, yeah. That is what we've achieved.
That's what we're capable of achieving.
That is the, I will say, that is the amount of acreage that we have. It is not the amount of safe and clean and equitable parks that we have.
Okay. I, I agree. So, just to be clear, and I think Zach or Counselor Geary may have taken this, but we do have the capability to bank the land and let it sit idle, much like Quarry Park? Am I correct? Okay.
We do, so there, there is a carrying cost to places that are undeveloped, and that's actually in that chart that I pointed out on page C11. It does, you know, we do have a lot of activity in Quarry Park, and we do have to send our maintenance crews out there for that. So, we do have carrying costs, but yes, we can absolutely bank them, and that's also an opportunity for us to bring in partners on things as well.
Okay. Yeah, I know there's something proposed there. Under what condition would the Parks and Rec Director actually increase the amount of parkland that's required for an area?
And I think, if I can rephrase that, you're asking, under what conditions would we accept more parkland than what the minimum is?
Yeah, would you as, or, excuse me, the position of director, were accepting more parkland?
Yeah, I think we could, you know, if, if the financial conditions change in our maintenance group, which is actually under the Public Works Director, I could see us looking at that differently. I could see us evaluating whether or not we've achieved our goal of the build back and, and doing that analysis through that equity lens. And I think Heather laid some of those examples out. They're, they're the same concerns that you all are talking about, that we talked about through the development of the pros plan. Is there an opportunity for us to look at acquiring parkland from a lens of abundance rather than a lens of a scarcity? And I do think there are those opportunities out there.
We're not providing opinions right now.
We have just 10 minutes really left for all three people, so if you have any additional comments, I'd make.
I just, I don't support, support reducing parkland. I'll leave it at that.
Counselor?
Yeah, I was just going to, you're wanting feedback, so I was just going to give feedback that I, I think I lean in listening to the discussion that's gone forth so far along with Zach's line of thought. So, I just wanted to put that out there, that that's where I'm sitting. I think that if we have concerns about needed safeguards, we can draft policies to, to maybe put guidelines in place on what, what those decisions are going to look like. But I'm concerned about adding more and more layers of, of committees responsible for develop, determining how development's going to go forward and the time and efficiencies and problems that's going to create. And I'm comfortable with that seat being the one that ultimately makes that decision. And I would echo the, I don't want to see any less parks either comment.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Just to be clear, it sounded like there was a little bit of concern if, if the Parks Recreation Director did not want a park, how would we trigger that to a public body? Wouldn't the Parks Recreation Director just send that to the City Council or to a, a commission to make that determination?
I think the concern is there's no step in that process outlined, either in code or ordinance or resolution right now. I will say that anybody can come to the council and raise an issue with them and bring it to their attention, and certainly, I've been, I've been inclined to tell people that's the proper place if there's an issue that they don't approve of, that I have made a decision on. Noise is one of them.
So, Jeff and I have been conversing over here. There could be a means, so, in terms of land use divisions, where, which is where we exact land for, for public amenities, some go to the Planning Commission for decision-making, and for those, that's the subdivisions that are greater than 10 lots and planned developments. And so, when that staff report goes to the Planning Commission for decision-making, we could look at a memo coming from the Parks and Rec Director indicating, I've made this decision for these following reasons, and that can be brought out into the public venue. The land division applications that do not go into a public venue for decision-making are minor partitions and subdivisions less than 10, 10 lots. That's probably where you're going to see things like the trail connectivity pieces that are, have been identified and stuff like that. That's just a decision that's sent out to the actual applicant. And so, everyone has the opportunity to appeal the land use decisions of the city, but you have to be aware of the land use decisions of the city to appeal, and there's the irony of all of this. The Planning Commission can pull up decisions that are made administratively. I've worked in other communities where all administrative land use decisions were actually sent to the Planning Commission so they could review them, and then if you want to pull it up and appeal it, you could do so, and maybe we could build that into the process. But those are the, those, those are the two sort of avenues for exactions and land division and the different decision-making processes associated with them.
Okay, thank you.
Why don't we take a spin around the dice here so everybody has a mo, or a moment to add any final comments, and you don't, you're not required to. None from you, counselor, commissioner, commissioner, counselor, commissioner?
I, yeah, if, I do like the idea, if, if there's a way to kind of stack up as the, as the land piece, as the park pieces come in front of you, you know, just bundle it up, send it to us so we know, so we don't have to piecemeal it, so we can see, oh, yeah, the connectivity is coming this way, or we're land banking this piece. You know, it doesn't have to be every single time. It could be a six-month check-in, a year check-in, but some way of recognizing what's going on so that we're either saying, okay, this is working, we don't have the maintenance for this, this is land banking, no, you can't turn down this because we do think this is going to be a valuable piece in 20 years or something like that. I would appreciate that.
I could think of a good way with the development of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Perhaps there's also more regular joint meetings with the Planning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board so that those kinds of conversations can happen, because they will also have the foundational operational cost component of it quite likely, and our fees and our cost recovery and that kind of thing. So, they would bring that element to it. So, it could be a check-in, a reporting out of how it's going, what land has been acquired and, and what hasn't, if there isn't any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, any additional? No, counselor?
I just really encourage land banking as much as possible. Thanks.
One second. Good, good. Any additional thoughts? Any additional thoughts, Commissioner?
Is staff wanting to move forward with the pros adoption, or is that just anticipating the appeal not going in favor?
I think collectively, our, our recommendation is that the pros plan should be in some element part of the land use process because the land use process can support the acquisition and development of parks and take some of that financial responsibility off of the city.
The recommendations in your packet are the ones that would go forward to public hearing as the next step. I don't think that, there's no direction needed tonight, right, Heather?
Or in works. Okay. Great, wonderful. Thank you, everybody. We will end the work session at 6:51 PM. We'll take about a seven-minute break here so that we're all back in our seats for the beginning of the council meeting, which will start at 7 o'clock PM. Thank you. Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here this evening. I would like to call the order, the October 22 regular business meeting of the McMinnville City Council, October 22, 2024, regular business meeting of the McMinnville City Council, and ask the city recorder to do a roll call, please.
Councillor Geary.
Good evening.
Councillor Chenoweth.
Present.
Councillor Peralta.
Councillor Payne.
Here.
Councillor Minkie is absent this evening. Councillor President Garvin.
Here.
And Mayor Drabkin.
Here. Thank you so much. If you are able this evening to stand, please do so and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councillor Payne, will you please lead us?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We have two proclamations this evening. The first is for Extra Mile Day. Whereas McMinnville, Oregon is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas McMinnville, Oregon is a community that encourages its community members to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas McMinnville, Oregon is a community that chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas McMinnville, Oregon acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2024. Now therefore, I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, Oregon, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2024 as Extra Mile Day. And I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in their own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to their organizations, families, community, country, and world a better place. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed on this 22nd day of October, 2024. We also have a proclamation this evening for Veterans Day. Whereas on Veterans Day, we pay tribute to all who have risked their lives to preserve the liberty of our nation, the families who support them, and the heroes no longer with us. The unparalleled spirit, skills, and devotion of our troops is the backbone of our formidable armed forces. And whereas the community of McMinnville has great respect, admiration, and utmost gratitude for all, past and present, who have selflessly served our country and community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of all who have served in the armed forces, past and present, have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our community. And whereas the City of McMinnville recognizes and respects our veterans for their many contributions. And whereas all of our armed forces continue to be an inspiration to all of us through demonstration of courage, leadership, and commitment in service to our community and country. And whereas in 1938, Congress declared November 11th as a legal holiday emphasizing its dedication to the cause of world peace. In 1954, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed a bill into law renaming the holiday as Veterans Day. And on September 20, 1975, an ending with President Gerald R. Ford, signed Public Law 9497 for November 11 to be recognized as a national holiday to honor all our past and present veterans who have served in the armed forces. And whereas in 1975, Congress voted to approve Veterans Day as a national holiday every November 11 in honor of all of our veterans who have served in the armed forces. And whereas those veterans bring to us a sense of duty, patriotism, discipline, and willingness to serve others that reminds us all our obligations to our country and the price that is paid for our freedoms. And whereas it is fitting to pay tribute also to the families of our past and present veterans who have endured sacrifice and separation, anguish and loneliness while their loved ones served with pride and honor. And whereas the courage, honor, sacrifice, and dedication that our veterans have shown in the name of freedom and democracy are worthy of recognition. And whereas the City of McMinnville has many veterans in our community who have served our country with distinction and honor. And whereas the City Council encourages all community members to honor the valor and sacrifice of our past and present veterans, thank our veterans and their lives and take a few moments to learn about the sacrifices they made. Now therefore, I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim November 11, 2024, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our military veterans as Veterans Day. We give our heartfelt thanks in honor of the service the veterans have selfishly given. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed on this 22nd day of October, 2024. We are now at the portion of the evening where we will go to comments from community members. Any interested audience member that wishes to provide comment may do so. Any comments provided that require some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments are limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature or send a chat directly to our city recorder and we will call your name and unmute your mic when your time is up. I would like to remind everyone that the public comment portion of the evening is not an opportunity for back and forth with members of the council, but an opportunity for the public to provide comment to the council. And again, if so required, a member of staff or council can follow up after. We have an unusual request tonight for a member of council to leave the council and join the public in order to provide public comment. So I've asked that councillor to step down from the dais for public comment and provide his comment. So I will start with Chris Chenoweth this evening, representing not the council but himself individually.
Before we start, can I just state for the record that the council received a public comment from Chris Palmer? I emailed that to everyone earlier. It will be made part of the record in the amended packet that gets posted tomorrow.
Thank you. And as you provide your public comment this evening, please remember to state your name and the city in which you reside for the record, and a timer will appear on the screen so you can monitor your own time. Thank you.
Yes, this is Chris Chenoweth, City of McMinnville. Members of the council, it's not typical for a city councillor to step off the dais to address you directly, but here we are. The current leadership under our mayor and city manager has centralized control to the point where open discussions on these types of issues are being stifled. I've raised concern about this over the past two years, noting how the mayor's tight control of the agenda limits our ability to engage in meaningful dialogue. Today, I want to discuss the appointment process of the chief of police, a dialogue that should have been done on the dais. I believe the email from Chris Palmer effectively highlighted why it's crucial for the council to play a leading role in this process. Over the last several months, I've taken several steps to try to address this. I did not wait to the last minute. I've been working for months. The last step that I took was an email I sent after talking to a former municipal city judge. I sent that email on October 11 to the mayor, city manager, HR director, and city attorney requesting an outside city attorney be hired to determine whether Jeff has exceeded his authority as city manager. Sadly, I received no response. This situation could have been avoided. The mayor claimed that the current hiring process mirrors that of Chief Scales. That's simply not true. When Chief Noble resigned, we were without a city manager, and the council decided they did not want to proceed with hiring the chief until the city manager's position was filled. Chief Scales was appointed as interim chief, and after a thorough six-month process, we hired city manager Meker. From the included January 2015 council minutes, we can see the council was deeply involved in the appointment process of that chief. They determined the process, they conducted the interview, and then made the decision. The city manager wasn't even present for the interview. This contrasts sharply with what's happening today. When Chief Scales was interviewed, he was the only finalist. When Chief Noble was hired, there were four finalists, all four interviewed by the council. According to our city charter, the administrator of officers, which include the chief of police, shall be appointed by a majority of the council. The current process we're going through, the current process that is occurring with the chief is similar to what we did with our city attorney and with our public works director. And it was clearly stated in the ordinance that we voted on that Jeff appointed those two and we approved the appointment. That's a violation of the charter, folks. This is not about politics. It's about adhering to our fundamental principles, namely the rule of law. If we don't stay within the guardrails of the charter, why do we even have one? The charter places this power in your hands, council, and I'm asking you to make sure you take that power back because that's where it belongs. Thank you for your attention. I'm asking that a copy of this statement be entered into the record as well as the supporting documentation that I'm providing tonight. That supporting documentation is the email I sent, the minutes from the two January 13 meetings.
Your time is up, councillor.
And the resolution. Thank you.
Who else signed up for public comment this evening?
Next, we have Mark Davis.
Thank you. The audience will please refrain from applause and booing. Would appreciate if the audience would refrain from responding either with applause or booing afterwards. Thank you. Mr. Davis, if you'll please state your name and the city in which you reside for the record and monitor your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Mark Davis. I live in McMinnville. I was mentioned during the work session you had regarding parks as to my stance on the park standard. I would like to clarify that just so that everybody understands. I support 14 acres per thousand. Heck, I would even like more acres per thousand of parks if we could afford it. The real issue that the concern I have is the city does not have the money to support the 14 acres per thousand. That standard has been in place for the last 25 years. In the last 25 years, we've built about 50 acres of parks. We've added about 10,000 people to the city. You can do the math. We didn't even achieve the 10 that we're now hoping to do. It takes money. I'm not even, you know, certain that we're going to have enough money. We have $152 million Parks Bond, or, you know, excuse me, it's Culture, Parks, Recreation, whatever the bond is being called. I've forgotten the official name. But we're spending $152 million on that bond, which is going to include a small portion of what's called for in the next 20 years for parks. The last time when we had the actual Parks Bond, that was about $9.5 million. That was the only funding we had for parks for the next 20 years. I'm concerned that where's this other money going to come from to even cover the Parks Plan that we have, let alone 10 acres per thousand of the population we're claiming is going to be coming to the city? The appeal at the Land Conservation and Development Commission that was referred to is more a land use issue, and that specifically addresses which land is going to be used for parks. The city's contention is that all 14 acres per thousand should be buildable land. And the disagreement is that we have is we feel that very clearly the comp plan and the Parks Plan itself is talking about eight acres per thousand of buildable land. The other six acres is in greenways, green spaces, and natural areas. It's on unbuildable land. We have about 1,000 acres of unbuildable land in the city right now. There's plenty of land to put those kind of natural features that I think we all like to see in parks. That, I think, summarizes what that issue is, that they will make their decision. We'll see where that goes. But I'm not opposed to parks. I totally support as many parks as we can afford, but I think we need to recognize that there's limits to how much the taxpayers are going to be able to afford and how much we're going to get in grants and other funding to build parks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who else do we have signed up for public comment this evening?
Next, we have Vanessa Hawkins.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to provide public comment. If you'll please state your name and the city in which you reside for the record, and then you can monitor your time on the screen. Thank you.
Vanessa Hawkins, and I live here in McMinnville. So this is kind of an interesting request, I guess. We had a house fire almost a year ago, November 21, 2023. And I say "we" because there's myself, and then there's my boyfriend and our now five-year-old son. We've been displaced since then. We are within three to four weeks of our house finally being done and able to move back in. However, McMinnville has some codes and ordinances, and then there's national standards for ADA compliance for your sidewalks. Apparently, because the remodel that we didn't choose to have was over a certain dollar amount, it triggered some sort of an inspection for our sidewalks. And they are 0.2% above where they should be. So now, after hemorrhaging, I don't even know how many thousands of dollars for the last year, we are being told that we can't get our final inspection approved for move-in unless we redo the sidewalks. And the sidewalks are not damaged at all. They're not. It's just the slope of them. If you go across the street from us, wheelchair can't even go down that sidewalk at all, period. My son can't even ride his bike down that sidewalk. It is so incredibly messed up from the tree roots. And that's just been left. It's been reported repeatedly, and it's just, they're allowed to paint them orange and then move on. And there are other cities with this same thing, but they allow exemptions for people who have something like a tornado or a house fire or something like that. They don't enforce it. The sidewalks were built back in, I believe, 2002. They've never met ADA standards. And it was never a big deal until ODOT got sued. Now, it's a big deal. And we just want to move home. And I'm not asking for sympathy or anything like that, but we would like an exemption. And we were told to come and speak with you because you guys are the ones that make the codes for the city specifically. And we didn't choose to have our house burn. And we didn't choose to live in a hotel for the last year. And we don't understand why we are the only ones that will have to fix the sidewalk when none of the rest of them will be compliant or even get repaired. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. A member of staff will follow up with you. Be sure your comment card is turned in, or I guess it is because your name was announced. Thank you so much. Who else has signed up for public comment, please?
That's everyone that's signed up.
Okay, is there anyone else on Zoom or in the gallery that would like to provide public comment this evening? Okay, not seeing any, we'll move on with the meeting this evening. Next, we are going to a presentation from Dr. Jessica Howard, the president and CEO of Chamecada Community College. Thank you so much for being here this evening and looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor Drabkin and councillors. It's my great pleasure to be here this evening. Chamecada, of course, is your community college. We are the second-largest community college in the state after Portland Community College. And we have a measure on the November ballot that I'd just like to go over a little bit, just to provide some general information about that to the community. But before I do that, just a couple of things to mention to you in terms of Chamecada and what we've been up to and why I think it is such an extraordinary college. We'll go to the next slide. We engaged in an economic workforce study about a year and a half ago, along with all the other community colleges in the state of Oregon, and it was the other community colleges in the state of Oregon, and it was found that for every $1 that a student invests in their education at Chamecada, they receive an $8.50 return, which is pretty amazing. The Oregon average among all 17 community colleges was $5.20, which is also a tremendous rate of return, but you can see the difference there. And I think in a single measure, this is a reflection of how Chamecada has managed its resources very wisely for decades, and has deployed those resources for the maximum benefit of students. I think this is an important thing to share before we ask the voters on a bond measure, because taking care of your resources should be a top question, I would think, if one were asked to support the college. Something else to share, we're the largest Hispanic-serving post-secondary institution in the state of Oregon, which is a massive, massive opportunity for us. Not only is it exciting to be able to serve folks who identify as Hispanic or Latino, it is also a designation that allows us to compete for federal grants that is simply not available to an institution that doesn't have that status. And actually, we have received a number of those grants, and it lifts all boats. It's a wonderful way to bring federal resources into our community. Quality is something that we are very proud of, and we take very seriously. So many things I could share about quality of Chamecada, but just one example. Nursing is, of course, a very competitive field to go into. It's also a pressing workforce need. And nationally, the pass rate for all those nurses that have received the full two-year degree to get registered nursing status, they all take a particular national exam. It's called the NCLEX exam. The national pass rate on the NCLEX is 79% for the first-time takers. In Oregon, I'm happy to report, it's higher, it's 86%. At Chamecada, it's 100%, and has been that way for a number of years. We're the number-one ranked nursing program in the state. It's an outstanding example to share about the quality that we offer. Chamecada Scholars is something else to talk about, particularly when considering value. This program, if you're aware of it, it is eligible to any high school graduate within our service district who has a 3.4, sorry, 3.5 GPA or above. And if that student elects to go to Chamecada, they enjoy a full tuition scholarship, and that holds for the entire two years, as long as they keep that 3.5 GPA. We're able to offer that because we self-fund it. We're the only community college in the state that does so. And I actually have figures, if you're interested, about how many students within Yamhill County have taken advantage of this tremendous program, and it's actually at a greater percentage than the participation rate of students here. So that means that you have more students among those going to Chamecada who qualify for the Scholars Program from Yamhill than in some of our other service areas. A couple of other things to mention, we have our own low-cost textbook publishing arm, which has saved students over $6 million to date. And then finally, we're the first community college in the state of Oregon to offer an applied bachelor's degree. Ours is in Leadership and Management. It stacks right on top of every single two-year degree in career and technical education that one could have, whether we offer it or anyone else. And this is a response to workforce demand in terms of growing leadership and succession plans within companies for those folks who have the two-year degree. So it's really very, very unusual, and it leads right into Western's Master of Science in organizational leadership. So this is an example of an educational ecosystem that really works, and it only happens here. And we're really proud to be a key piece of that. Okay, so enough about that. Let's go to the next slide. We wouldn't be able to do all those things I just mentioned without a big investment by the community back in 2008. If you look on these slides, you will see something very familiar. The Yamhill Valley Campus was a huge beneficiary of the 2008 bond levy. That $92 million bond allowed us to build all of those structures you see up there and provide key capacity in emergency services, in protective services, in applied technology, and general education across the district. Next slide. So that 2008 bond measure is about to retire. It will be retired in the next year. This bond measure that you will see on the November ballot, if passed, will take its place. It will not overlap, and it will keep the tax rate the same. So again, this bond measure will not raise property taxes vis-à-vis Chamecada. And that is one of the biggest talking points we have. You'll see that the total amount, $92 million in 2008, $140 in 2024, that is a reflection of the fact that we have more properties and they're worth a lot more. But the rate on the individual taxpayer is exactly the same. Next slide. We had a tremendous amount of input when we were considering this bond measure. We had several conversations here in McMinnville, a lot of other input, and what we heard from folks was, "Don't stop investing in career and technical education. We rely upon it." And that's going to be one of the key features of this bond if passed. Let's go to the next slide. This is the first bucket of projects that would be funded if this bond passes. And here, we've specified the trades and also paramedic programming, because those are such enormous needs in our community, and this bond would allow us to build much-needed capacity for those particular trades. Let's go to the next one. Wellness and disaster preparedness. I know you remember the Beechey Creek Fire from 2020. Those top left-hand corner photos are from that time period when our Building 7 on the Salem campus functioned as incident command for that fire. We had also a tremendous number of our fire science graduates who fought in that fire. This is not an unusual request for us. We are often called upon to provide disaster resilience and resources for community during times of extreme need. And so that's what this particular sort of concept would allow us to do, is make that particular building much more seismically sound, and also, it has no air conditioning, for one thing. So that's kind of a big deal, considering it is our largest single venue. So what this will do is allow us to shore up that particular building so it can function as a community disaster resource site. An additional benefit here is that we already have secured an $8 million state grant for that exact project, but it requires a Wonder One match. So until we get the full $8 million, we can't use this $8 million. And so the hope is that we would take it from this general obligation bond that's going to be on the ballot. Next slide. Improved teaching and learning spaces. This is a general category, and I think it's best communicated if I were to ask you, how many of you use a cell phone that's 16 years old? Even our Yamhill Valley Campus, which is one of our most modern facilities, it has technology that is too old. We cannot keep up with the demands of teaching and learning, and we would end up leaving our students behind if we did not upgrade our technology, and that's what a lot of this bond is about. There's also a lot of ADA compliance and other things that continue to change and that we need to invest in. Next slide. Safety and security. This is not too different from what I just mentioned. You see that sort of old-looking security camera in the upper-left? This applies to every single one of our campuses and sites, including Yamhill Valley here in McMinnville. We've got to get our parking lots shored up, and we have to have all of our security cameras functioning. Having a million iterations and generations of those cameras doesn't work very well. So without students being safe, we can't expect them to learn. Next slide. Improved science opportunities. This is a rather specific project. It has to do with the Woodburn Center, and at that location, we have a lot of students taking the first two years of the four-year degree and then transferring. But part of that two-year foundational, you know, the freshman-sophomore course requires a sophomore science lab. Without a specific, you know, lab that's actually in the building, we can't offer that course, and so it's a huge access issue. Fortunately for McMinnville, you have that already at the Yamhill Valley Campus. Woodburn does not, so it would allow us to do that. Next slide. And this is our last kind of category of projects that this bond, if passed, would help fund. And this may look the most vague, but it could be the most significant, because we see, post-pandemic, a lot of learning needs in the students who are coming to us. And having wonderful programs and tremendous facilities doesn't mean that students are being successful. We have to have them be successful, and that means writing labs, tutoring centers, math hubs, and all kinds of other supports and environments for those students. This will affect every location that we have, and we're using the students for a lot of that valuable input. Next slide. I think that's the end of my presentation. What I would ask is, do you have any questions for me?
Thank you so much. Wonderful presentation. Any council questions at this time, either here or from those that are online this evening, which may just be Council President? Councilor Payne?
I just want to say thank you for providing a detailed presentation.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the great work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to advice and information items. I will start on my right this evening with Councilor Payne, who was representing the city at the League of Oregon Cities Conference and was our elected delegate.
Thank you. The League of Oregon Cities Conference was Wednesday through Saturday, and it was not as well-attended as I'd hoped, but I think a lot of people are holding out for next year for the 100th anniversary of the League of Oregon Cities. I was honored to be able to vote for Adam, I think his last name is Molly, but I met him a few years ago through a networking event at the League of Oregon Cities, to the League of Oregon Cities Board. And there's a couple of public service stickers in the kitchen, if you all want to choose one, they're kind of fun. And Lipstick and Landscape Review both meet tomorrow, so I don't have anything to report on those.
Thank you. Councilor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. MCM11 has not met. Council governments had a legislative committee meeting, I think, a week and a half ago. We heard from the Association of Oregon Counties, who talked about their transportation agenda. My notes from that say that they raised the concern that, over the next five years, counties anticipate a 60% shortfall for pavement preservation projects, 70% shortfall for capital construction, totaling $839 million per year. They are supporting a legislative package that would increase gas taxes, and their goal through that is to protect 30% of the state highway revenues that currently go to counties.
Thank you. Councilor Chenoweth?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilor Gary?
Being between meetings for my assignments, I also have nothing to say.
Thank you. Council President?
Sorry about that. Technical difficulties, and apparently my camera doesn't want to work. I'll try and work on that, too. Fire District, we got some new signs up yesterday or the day before. If you haven't seen those, take a look at them. So those are permanent signs. We're just waiting on some landscaping to go around them. Visit McMinnville. We had our first meeting with our new CEO, and doing some cash flow correction stuff there with some of our TLT dollars coming in below what we had budgeted for. And then our website traffic's down about 28% for organic reach, so we're kind of retooling some things there. But in that containing cash flow, the month of January will be the first month that we go to virtual-only publication of The Crush Magazine. So that was a high-expense item for us, and that will create some additional capacity to balance our cash flow to our expenses, as well as some other contracts we had we aren't going to renew. But Dan's great to have online for visiting McMinnville. I'm excited to see him take the organization to the next level, and then we'll also do some destination development stuff with Corey Park and some other things out that way. Airport Commission, that meeting could have been coming up here in the first part of November, but it got rescheduled to November 19th at 6:00 PM. And that's all I have for council reports for now. Thank you.
Thank you. On my reports, I was able to attend and excited to attend the ribbon-cutting for the new Three Mile Lane Bridge. I was extra excited that I made the ODOT newsletter, as did Commissioner Johnston and a few others associated with the project. And then one of the things that was highlighted in the remarks at that ribbon-cutting that I thought was so impressive was that ODOT didn't really just build us one bridge, they actually built us three bridges. And so they built the first bridge so that we could have an alternate route, and then they built a utility bridge in which to work on and repair this new bridge, and then built this new bridge. So it was quite the undertaking, and given the fact that they built three bridges and brought the project in on time and under budget are all commendable achievements. I also was able to attend the Chief of Police meet and greet, to which all councilors were invited. I also attended the Outstanding Young Alumni Presentation at Linfield University, which honored Miriam Vargas Corona. She gave a truly tremendous and inspiring speech that spoke to how integral Linfield University and the individuals that work at Linfield had been to creating and layering successes throughout her life, and it was a really touching ceremony. We also hosted our federal lobbyists this past week, and they had tours of the Innovation Campus, urban renewal area, the Northwest Rubber Site, all areas where we are seeking Third Street, all areas where we're seeking federal investment, help bring down our individual cost going into these projects, and help us accumulate more capital to be able to move from planning to implementation on a number of these things. Specifically, of course, we received $850,000 last year from the federal government on Third Street, and so we want to keep bringing in those resources. I was also able to attend the 200-year anniversary of Portland Cement at Evergreen, at the Evergreen Campus, another great event highlighting local McMinnovators, including Solid Carbon. Also highlighted the work that Linfield University has done and is doing amongst other projects, and it was an event that really looked to the future of addressing the climate crisis through the built environment, and again, a really inspiring event generally. And then while I was there, I had an opportunity to explore something new that's coming to Evergreen, that I think might bring everybody back for a visit if you haven't been there for a moment, which is they're starting a new interactive tour with an augmented reality. And this was inspired entirely by the docents at Evergreen, who saw kids walking around the museum, looking at their phones while the adults were looking up at the airplanes. And so they developed an app where they could create avatars and put them in and around the airplanes that were explaining the history and showing off photographs. And so now you walk around and you can hold up your phone, and the docent that's on your right is also telling you an engaging story through his avatar while he's standing next to the plane and telling you the history and showing you the people that wrote in it. So way to meet people where they are, Evergreen. And with that, we will go to department head reports. I'll start with our city manager, Jeff Towery.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, a couple of weeks ago, I notified the council via email that Finance Director Kwayar Smith had resigned her position effective November 1st. We're expecting to post that position later this week, and anticipating a calendar that includes final interviews and decision in mid-December. We'll also be bringing some temporary support to assist with the workload in the Finance Department. Jennifer will be doing some part-time work to assist us in completing the audit and annual financial report, and will also bring to bear some internal leadership resources to help lead the department in the absence of a full-time director. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney David Leitenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I have-
I have just one exciting announcement, and that is that the city last week closed on and is the proud owner of property at Colvin Court, which will be the site of the future Public Works campus. I'm told that the Public Works team is already moving forward with plans for design that they will be bringing to council in the future.
Fantastic. Community Development Director Richards?
Thank you, Mayor. We are at the time of the year where we're going to start recruiting for our city-appointed committees that do the volunteer work and really put the information together that we bring to you, so they inform a lot of our programs. We will be recruiting for volunteers to serve on our Planning Commission, Historic Landmarks Committee, Landscape Review Committee, Affordable Housing Committee, our Economic Vitality Council, and our Urban Rule, Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. So if anyone's interested in serving the city in any of those roles, they are welcome to contact me or go on our website and look for an application for those committees. I also wanted to share with everyone that we did go through our process of review and selection for the Northwest Rubber Site for development teams. We've narrowed it, we had eight great teams that we reviewed, we interviewed four and narrowed it down to three to move into the second phase, which is sort of what we're calling our semifinalist phase. But this is an opportunity where the community can get involved in the process as well. So we are going to be designing a workshop, an open house for the community sometime in early December to meet the three development teams and to talk about the Northwest Rubber Site and the aspirations of what we want to see redeveloped there. So please look out for that information. We'd love to see everyone participate.
Thank you. Public Works Director Jeffrey Hunsaker?
David and I agreed that he would steal my thunder tonight, so I have no other updates for Public Works.
Thank you so much. I'll go to Claudia Sisnares, our City Recorder.
I'm not going to try and steal Vicki's thunder, but I do just want to thank HR for putting a de-escalating training that was hosted by Yamhill County. It was great. A lot of people attended, and again, just want to thank HR for putting that together and the county for providing that service to us.
Wonderful. Thank you. And are there any other executives in here that I'm not seeing executive team members?
Vicki's online. I'm not sure.
Vicki's online. Is Director Muir not joining us any longer? Okay. HR Director Vicki Hedges? You also unmuted and then it re muted.
Okay. Sorry about that. I had to get permission there from, from the recorder team. So I don't have anything to report tonight. Jeff shared that we'll be working on the Finance Director position, so you will be seeing those. And then Claudia, thanks for mentioning the de-escalation training, and I also want to share my thanks to Yamhill County for partnering to provide that training.
Great. Thank you so much. Does any member of the council need to recuse themselves from the consent agenda or request to have any item removed from the consent agenda as presented? Not seeing any. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion from Councilor Gary?
Second.
I have a second from Councilor Chenoweth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the consent agenda has passed unanimously. We'll now consider the first reading with a possible second reading of Ordinance Number 5149. Does any council member need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this, this agenda item? Will our City Attorney, David Leitenberg, please read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, thank you. This is Ordinance Number 5149, an ordinance amending Title 17, zoning of the McMinnville Municipal Code to Chapter 17.54, General Regulations, and approving the decision, findings, and conclusionary findings for Docket G. 1-24.
Thank you. I'll now call on our Community Development Director, Heather Richards, to present. Is that correct?
I'm actually going to introduce you to Taylor Graybell. He's our senior planner, one of our newer planners on the team, and he's going to lead this presentation for you.
So my name's Taylor Graybell, Senior Planner with the Planning Division, and here tonight to discuss Docket G. 124, accessory structures and yards, Ordinance Number 5149. So here's the agenda for tonight's presentation. We'll go through each step throughout the presentation. So first, an overview. So why are we here tonight? We're here to consider legislative amendment to the zoning ordinance specifically to Chapter 17.54, general provisions. In a broad sense, the purpose of the revisions are to return the interpretation of accessory structures to before AV 123, and this has to do with attached patios and decks being allowed to encroach into certain setbacks, and also the number of detached accessory structures allowed in certain setbacks. Then lastly, to remove the limitation of one detached accessory structure allowed in these areas. So a little background. This all started, there was a legal determination as part of a planning project that was going before the Planning Commission, which revised the way that residential accessory structures are regulated. During this process, the Planning Commission requested that staff bring a code revision to codify the historic implementation of standards. These, staff presented a draft ordinance to the Planning Commission at a work session on August 15th, and then the Planning Commission unanimously recommended the adoption of the proposed amendment that's before you tonight at a public hearing on September 19th. There was no public testimony received as part of the public process. So here, we're going to establish a little bit of context, what was done before. So before AV 123, when we had this new legal interpretation, we allowed detached and attached covered patios, covered decks, and uncovered decks to extend into certain required yards, and for more than one accessory structure in certain required yards. So those texts that's in red, those are the things that changed as part of the interpretation. So here's a little bit more of a detailed layout of what was permitted before AV 123. So you see, broken out for detached structures in yards and attached structures in yards, the different characteristics. Again, highlighted in red was the change to the maximum of one detached structure allowed in the yard. And then for the attached structures, we were previously allowing that to encroach into certain yards, but the new interpretation said that that's no longer permitted. So here's sort of a breakdown of what that looked like. You'll see below a map that's showing interior and corner lot, that area that's in pink is really the area we're talking about for the allowed encroachments into yards. And you'll notice that detached structures, there was no required setback, and as long as it's behind the back building line in that pink area, under 10 feet tall and under 100 square feet in size. So again, attached and detached covered patios and decks were allowed 10 feet from the rear property line, and attached and detached uncovered decks were allowed 5 feet from the property line, when behind the back building line. So this map's really supposed to show you what happened as part of this interpretation. So this slide was prepared for the Planning Commission to help show the previous implementation of the code and the new interpretation. So the map below shows the rear yard highlighted in yellow, and non-conforming structures is now seen under the new interpretation, unclosed patios in red. And then the, the yellow highlights are accessory structures that are now non-conforming. So from this map, we see in this specific area of town that 11 of 14 properties on the subject block are non-compliant with new interpretation. So this is just an example of one area in the town, but across the city, it's likely that there's accessory structures that met the previous interpretation that now don't comply with our new interpretation of the code. So what's proposed? Summary, return to the pre AV 123 interpretation, and then to remove the limitation of one detached accessory structure allowed to encroach into these yards. So that's the staff report, detailed. There were kind of five key amendments that are proposed as part of this ordinance amendment. We'll look at each one in detail in the following slides. So the first was to restore the interpretation to allow encroachment of attached requirements for patios and decks. So below, you'll see the draft language to add to Section 17.54.050(c)(3). So this is essentially keeping the same language that we had before and just adding it to a new section to allow for those attached covered patios, decks, and uncovered decks and setbacks. So it's just a copy and paste from the previous interpretation to a new section to allow for the historical implementation of code. Other key point was to remove the restriction of a maximum of one accessory structure in certain setbacks. So this was really just modifications to 17.54.020, and then A and B, and this was just taking singular language and making it plural. Then we were interested in just providing some more examples of what a detached accessory structure is for the public. It could be sort of confusing, and we wanted to just help make it more clear when the public was looking at the code, what we were talking about. And then four, this is a new recommendation that was brought forward to you tonight. It's going to, it's the proposal is to increase the permitted size of accessory structure in that rear yard from 100 to 200 square feet. So this was something that was recommended by the Planning Commission, and it more closely aligns with building code permit exceptions. So there's no change to the maximum height permitted, it would just be increasing the size from 100 to 200 square feet. And then five, to add two sections of the code. This was a recommendation by the Planning Commission, and this is to essentially allow for accessory structures that were placed under the previous interpretation to now be legally non-conforming, if compliant with the proposed standards. So this is just to make sure that the rules are applied uniformly and fairly across the city. So as was noted in your staff report, no fiscal impact is anticipated as part of this proposal. And then in the decision documents, we found that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan and with the zoning ordinance. So in summary, this is amendment to Chapter 17.54. It was initiated by the Planning Commission, unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. It complies with the applicable review criteria. There's no expected financial impact, and staff recommends approval of Ordinance Number 5149, consistent with the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval. Thank you. And on the screen, you'll see some options for the City Council moving forward, and again, staff's recommendation for approval of the ordinance, consistent with the Planning Commission recommendation. Any questions for staff?
Thank you. Before we go to questions for staff, I'm actually going to ask for, are we going to go, ask for, are we going to approve the first reading before council discussion? Mr. Leitenberg? Or council discussion and then move for adoption?
It would be nicer to accept the first reading and then move to discussion.
Thank you. That's what we will do. I would ask for a motion to accept the first reading of Ordinance Number 5149 and possibly pass to a second reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Payne, a second from Councilor Peralta. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Aye.
Then those opposed, say nay. And the motion passes unanimously. We'll now move to council discussion. Any councilors, Councilor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions for staff, and it was a little unclear to me with regard to the permitting process for these structures. Is this structures that can be, accessory structures that can be built without a permit? Meaning, does, do the structures described in this require a permit?
So it depends. The, basically, the accessory structures, that would be the detached structures, if they're below a certain height and size, which would be captured in this under 10 feet and under 200 square feet in size, would not require a permit. A deck could potentially require a permit based off of the height of the deck from the ground, so there is a potential in the case of the attached or detached decks. And those would be building permits.
Got it. Okay. And then the, thank you. Then the other question that I had is that, just reading through the staff report, it seems as though this change is needed because there was a challenge to the current ordinance, and in the process of responding to that challenge, the City Attorney determined that the ordinance was not comprehensive in the way that the staff described. That's what triggered this change, right? This need for a change, I should say.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President?
So unmute. So first question for staff would be, so do the new 200-square-foot requirements no longer make, require them to meet setback requirements? I believe before, when it was 100 square feet, you could do the, that building without meeting setback requirements, but if you have the 200 square feet, you had to meet setback requirements. So just some clarification on that.
That's correct. It would now allow a structure up to 200 square feet in that setback area, where before only 100 square feet was permitted.
And then second question would be, so if somebody builds a covered patio off their back porch, they are no longer eligible to have any accessory structure in their backyard as far as sheds or anything like that, under this new revision?
The new revision would permit attached and detached accessory structure in the yard. What happened is, that's how we previously interpreted the code, but the new interpretation said that that would now not be permitted. So the proposal before you tonight is to... So the proposal before you tonight is to revert back to allowing that situation to occur.
And that would be like for the shed situation, but what about for accessory dwelling units? As far as ADUs go, they're typically over 200 square feet, so they trigger a building permit anyways, and this wouldn't really come into play there. It'd be under all the ADU guidelines of parking and access and all that kind of stuff?
So this is really for residential accessory structures, not for accessory dwelling units. So that's part of the reason why we were adding some additional definitions there at the front of the chapter to help clarify that distinction. This would be area that doesn't basically have habitable space in it.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that I was figuring that out correctly. That's all I had for questions. Thank you for the great presentation and bringing this forward.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Council Gary?
1754020. So if I'm, I'm a builder, right? Cracking open the code, and I'm going to figure out if I can build this thing, and I'm going to start reading this code. And I'm going to read residential accessory structure in use. An accessory structure, and this is in your proposed language, an accessory structure refers to a detached, comma, non-habitable building, parenthetical notation, such as a shed greenhouse, comma, detached covered deck, comma, garage, comma, detached unenclosed covered patio, comma, and similar structure, end parenthetical notation. I'm struggling with the uncaveated garage. So I can have an attached garage that is allowed to be in the setbacks and be conforming? Or does that need to say detached garage?
The way this would read is that it has to be detached from the structure.
Right, but residential accessory structure in use. An accessory structure refers to a detached, non-habitable building, but it, and so we spend, I guess I'm just, we spend a bunch of time caveatting these and saying detached, 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 except garage. We say garage.
Yeah, so I see what you're saying, Counselor. This is not, this is not amended language that you're reading. This is current language in the code. If the council wants to put clarity into that where the others all say detached and put detached there as well, prior to the parent, the parentheses, it says detached, non-habitable building. So.
I think I am reading the, exhibit B, exhibit A to ordinance, new text is bold, italic and underlined. This is from that.
New text should be read as you, read as you see on the screen there.
So the existing language doesn't clarify detached is how I'm interpreting that. If you're on page 41 of 52, 17.54020.
Right.
Yeah.
Except for it starts with detached, non-habitable building. So anything in that parenthetical expression would have to be detached and non-habitable.
But we take the pains to specify detached, detached covered deck, detached unenclosed covered patio, but not at garage.
Yeah. So if you want to, as part of your, if you choose to move the ordinance forward, you can make that amendment as to add that language. We're creating a list within the parens, and the lists within the parens are not symmetrical, if you want to put it that way.
So you could either remove detached from the.
Then the list of descriptions or add it to the, yeah. I'd be more comfortable with adding it to it to clarify, but.
Anything else, Counselor?
So confirming my understanding of the proposed code, just saying in a different way, with the removal of the language specifying you can have one accessory structure, meaning now you can have as many as you want that can fit, given the guidelines.
Correct.
Okay. I'm struggling with that one, but.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions at this time from the council?
Councilor Gary, just to respond to that, that is what has historically been allowed. So that, one, can you throw that slide up that shows? No, that shows the existing conditions in that neighborhood. So when we looked, looked at this in this one neighborhood, when the administrative variance came through, we looked at the existing conditions in the neighborhood as to the accessory structures that currently populate those properties and found more than one accessory structure encroaching into the setback, because that's historically what's been approved in the community if it met that standard of size and was non-habitable. And so the planning commission's direction to staff was, we'd like to go back to what has been historically approved here, but we want the code to support it. So that's essentially what you see in front of you.
Because we've been allowing however many you want to have. Because that's what we've been allowing, I understand that providing the umbrella for clearing up existing non-conforming use, I don't know if I'm all the way there on codifying the allowance of unlimited accessory structures onsite. That's, that's where I'm uncomfortable, but not in the code or not in the code. In the discussions, if I may, in the discussions, pivoting away a little bit from their non-compliance or their position on the lot or the amount you can have, was there a discussion in their relation to the original structure and its design, since we're cracking open the code and cleaning up on accessories to the primary structure? Was there any discussion on, on its relation to the primary structure?
So no, there was not. Not, not similar to the discussion that the planning commission had about accessory dwelling units, which do have a design component of, to have similar design to the primary structure. That discussion did not take place for this particular component of the code, and this is really where you see the tool sheds and the playhouses and things like that that exist under the size components.
And where I see the design coming up, the design question in relation to detached accessory structures comes up for me because I've seen houses that we have on historic registry governed by a very particular set of design standards and requirements for allowances for materials used on those structures not get applied to accessory structures. And so I can build a detached garage that is unencumbered by its materials of the historic house that we've deemed are required. It's a leap away from the setbacks and sizes and allowances on how many we can of the code amendment that you're talking about, but because we're talking about detached structures, it's an opportunity to bring that up, which I've, I've found as a sort of loophole in the historic regulations of in construction.
Yeah. And that could be something, if you want, we could bring to the historic landmarks committee for consideration. I understand what you're saying. So new, new accessory structures on properties that host primary historic structures and the compatibility of them.
Counselor Peralta?
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, Zach. I wouldn't have thought of that, but I can definitely see the application with regard to historic registry properties. And what I wouldn't want to do is, you know, like, let's say I want to build a deck and a shed and a kid's play structure in my backyard. I wouldn't want to do anything up here to prevent that type of use in a backyard, which I think would be far more common than somebody, not that it wouldn't happen, I agree, and I think I like that idea that Director Richards just suggested of bringing something to historic landmarks committee to correct the problem that you're looking to address. But then still moving forward with the staff recommendation at this time, because I don't want to, looking at that, it looks like a lot of out of variance things that are probably perfectly reasonable to have in your backyard, and I wouldn't want to prevent that type of use.
I understand. I appreciate that. I agree. I want to have the play structure too. Another question, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Well, at the planning commission level, was there any discussion on permanent structures versus temporary structures? So you like, I erect a metal tent with a cover over the top and begin to work on motors in the, in the winter, and I can erect a series of those and put those, are those governed by the setback requirements? Are those not governed by setback requirements? Can those go right up against the property line? Do those have to be? I see some potential of, and I don't know if that's a setback item or a, how does code look at that temporary nature of a structure?
So the, the primary discussion was really based on whether it needed a building permit or not, and the building codes provisions are relative to size and height and not necessarily materials used. So, you know, that's, that's where the threshold became 200 square feet and 10 feet in height requires a building permit, and so that's sort of the provision that, that the planning commission decided anything beneath that threshold would meet this requirement.
Right. Because quickly I could pop up a 10 by 10 or 12 by 12 tent and be over 10 feet tall and go to town on any sort of uses of that, right? So it seems like different material, different application, and it's an unpermitted use. And it's easier to erect than a play structure, a garden shed, a.
Yeah, we do have, we, we have throughout the community, people with tents and tarps in their backyards sheltering something, right? Workspace or whatever it is. If you go over the height of 10 feet, that is, that would be a requirement as well for review. But we get, it's, what's interesting is in code enforcement, we get complaints about people's basketball courts. We've gotten complaints about tree houses. We've got complaints about play structures, a whole variety of things that are occurring in the backyard that are not habitable structures, but are defined under this sort of accessory structure discussion. And I think the planning commission wanted to keep it flexible enough to, to serve the community and how they wanted to use their backyards, and also reflect on the fact that there's been this historical tradition of, of allowance that's occurred until this one situation occurred where, where the language was challenged. And so they wanted to have, they wanted to have the code reflect what the, what the community has done in the past. But they did not talk about design standards and development standards relative to anything outside of the building code standards, I guess is what I would say.
Okay. Okay.
Counselor Chenoweth?
I have two, I have one question that is absolutely not related to this at all, and then one question that is. Question I have that's not related to this all, since we're talking about building structures. Is there any sort of code about what time of night these structures can be built? I've got a, I know of a situation where at 1:30 in the morning, saws and hammers are going on, and just curious.
Yeah, we do have a.
Hey, what would be the enforcement? Because none of you guys are awake at 1:30 in the morning.
I differ. If you look at my emails. But we do have a code that talks about construction activity and timeframe associated with them, and if somebody does have that occurring, you can, we do take time stamped videos through our code enforcement program as evidence of that, so.
So that was unrelated. The related question is if, since we have already moved and accepted the initial ordinance, if we move and accept and amended on the second reading, is that appropriate?
We are able to do so, so long as the change doesn't differ substantially from what has been read. I don't believe it does. Upon looking up that language for you, I was intending to verify that it was your impression also that it does not if we introduce something amended.
Any other, any other questions? I have one. Counselor Payne?
Is there an anticipation that this is going to burden of planning with code enforcement that potentially people are going to be reporting that these, that properties' backyards are going to be out of compliance now?
No, it should, it should actually do the opposite, and because most properties are in this condition, and the new interpretation of the code puts it in a different condition.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions? Hearing any, I would ask a city attorney, any, yeah. Are you going to suggest any amendments?
Unless it overly complicates it, I would feel more comfortable if continuing the theme of, even if it's describing detached structures, adding detached to garage to make it in line with everything else in that parenthetical notation that lists things as detached.
I agree with Counselor Gary.
Yeah, I'm okay with this.
If that's something you would like, it would be appropriate to move to amend in that way.
And would this be the appropriate time to do that?
It would.
I would move to amend the motion on the floor to include under 17.54.020 residential accessory structure in use, to add the word detached before garage in the definition of detached structures. Second, if you need that.
I have an amendment proposed to the motion by Counselor Gary. I have a second by Counselor Chenoweth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. And the amendment passes unanimously, or the, the motion passes unanimously, the amended motion passes unanimously. I will now ask the city attorney, David Leitenberg, to read the ordinance again by title only.
Thank you, Mayor. As I just mentioned, I would first like to poll the council. I do not believe that that constituted a substantial change, which our code would require moving the second reading to a different day. Again, I don't think that that was substantial. I would like your impressions as to whether you agree.
I, I do not believe that was substantial. It did not change the intent, and as Counselor Chenoweth pointed out, it only added clarity to what was already defined in the above language. If anybody objects, please speak up now. Great, let's move forward. Thank you.
Then, as amended, this is the second reading of ordinance number 5149, an ordinance amending Title 17 zoning of the McMinnville Municipal Code to chapter 17.54 general regulations, and approving the decision findings and conclusionary findings for docket G 1-24.
Thank you. I would ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5149.
So moved.
And.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Gary and a second by Counselor Payne, and I will ask our city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Gary?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
And Council President Garvin?
Aye.
And ordinance number 5149 is adopted unanimously. I'll now adjourn the city council meeting at 8:19 PM. The city council will now be going into the conference room for two executive sessions, which are.